All righty, thank you, Andrew. Today is September 11th, 2024. This is our 5 o'clock special work session, and I would like to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we have a lot of presenters tonight. Before we get going, I would like to take a moment of silence. Today is September 11th, and unfortunately, I think we all know what happened on that date. So if everybody would, please, take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Fortunately, that's one of those days we'll never forget, and I think everybody in this room could probably tell us exactly where you were when that happened. So unfortunately, we had to live through that, but we had a lot of good people and first responders that helped with that. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump into the work session, and I believe the Franklin County Humane Society is here. Gonna ask presenters if we could do maybe 10 minutes or so, you know? And then if you need that long or a little bit longer, and then we could do any Q and A from there. Hey, how you guys doing?
Good.
Good, good to see you.
Thank you for having us.
You can go ahead and state your name, just so everybody watching knows kinda who's presenting, if you don't mind.
My name's Carrie Lowery. I'm the Executive Director, Franklin County Humane Society.
Steve Middleton, I'm on the board, filling in for John Hibbert.
So, and John is with us, watching on video, so it's available by phone if we need him to answer questions. So by now, I guess, the court is aware that on July 1st, the Humane Society served notice of our intention to terminate our service contract with Franklin County Fiscal Court due to our inability to reach a new service agreement. And that deadline is approaching, as you know, October 1st. And so we've been asked by the court to come tonight, presumably to present our case for that request for a new service contract. So primarily, we're here to answer questions, I think, that you all may have of us for that request.
Carrie, did I ask you to... That letter that was sent out to... I still don't think has been circulated to the full court. Could you just explain what services and what it said?
Yeah, so in... To my understanding, since at least, I think, 2010, the Humane Society has been contracted by Franklin County Fiscal Court to provide the animal control facility for the county. That is a statutory requirement that all counties in the state have, operate an animal control facility. There are a lot of variations in how the counties are allowed to do that, one of which is to contract with another organization or another county. And so in this case, that is what the city and the county have chosen to do, is contract with us. In that time, of course, we've done our best to provide that service. In the summer last year, my understanding is, from the emails that John Hibbert reached out to the court and asked that we discuss a new service contract with a new fee structure, that did not generate much discussion. There was some discussion over the winter. I think John presented at a finance meeting, January or February. Multiple requests by email by Mr. Hibbert to have a discussion, to come to an agreement on what those terms would be. We were informed, as the public was, that the county passed its budget for fiscal year 2425 with an amount determined by the court, I guess, Finance Committee. Not sure how that process works for you all. And we were not involved in that discussion up to that point. And so at that point, that is when the board, the Humane Society's board, voted unanimously to serve notice to the county that we were gonna terminate services unless we could come to a new agreement. And so that's kind of the history of it, as briefly as I can offer it.
So Carrie, just so... And thank you again for being here tonight. So right now, the court is paying 74,500, I believe. Is that right in the... what our number is in the budget? It's close to that.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so, and then obviously, we do the animal control officer, his benefits, truck, vehicle, things like that. So the request, just to make sure we're on the same page, is an additional 50,000, is that correct?
So the request is for the fee to be 110,000 a year. So whatever that math is, 36,000 increase. The... it's based on a number of factors, not the least of which, as you all know, the cost of doing business quite simply has increased dramatically in the last five years. I wanna point out that that is not a reflection of us operating out of a new facility. It's simply the cost of caring for the animals, paying the personnel who are charged with that responsibility, and operating at a standard that is acceptable for an animal control facility. So, you know, I'm happy to go over numbers with you. I have, you know, I can discuss what other agencies' budgets are for comparably sized communities. I will tell you that 65% of the animals that come into our facility come in as stray animals. About half of those come from the city and half come from the county. And the county's contribution to our budget is about 20%. So our donors are currently subsidizing the responsibility the county has for caring for those animals. I think you all have in front of you just some rough numbers that we put together. Our cost of care, we based it on a 14-day period of time. The state mandates that we hold a stray animal for seven days. And after that time, that animal becomes a possession of Franklin County Humane Society. As a private organization, our mission is to rehome as many animals as possible, animals that are suitable to be in the community. And so we're not simply a clearinghouse for animals to come in and leave after seven days. Some county facilities operate that way. As a private entity, we do not, and we're not prepared to begin operating that way either. So it financially does not make sense for us to continue to offer the services we offer at the rate that we offer, given the volume of animals that come in as stray animals. Stray animals, animals that are being held on bike quarantines, animals that are being held for court cases, or, you know, police holds, things like that. Those are all... they all fall within that animal control umbrella.
All right, what questions do the court have for Carrie?
I got questions, but it may not be to her, it might be to you or somebody. I've actually... it's probably my fault, but I have never seen the contract that's under... that could be lapsing in October. Do we have... I'm sure there's a copy of that somewhere around...
Our contract with the...
You got that now? I didn't see the contract.
That's not the copy.
No, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have it. He's just asking.
You've got the contract.
Yeah.
So I don't know... I don't know what that contract says. I don't know what the bottom number is on that. You said 110,000, is that what's there now?
No, that's the amount that we're asking for. The original amount in the county contract is, for as long as it's been in place, has been self-renewing. Is that... I believe that. I don't have it in front of me.
According to the contract, it's 49,000 plus the CPI, which, once you figure out the CPI, I think the last time I looked at it, would be for pursuant to the contract, that was about $66,000. That would be, I guess, the county's obligation to the Humane Society from that contract that was entered into, looks like February 17th of 2011. And then again, I guess, amended in September, on September 9th, 2015. So like I said, with the CPI and everything in the contract, it was about $66,000 when you do those figures. So I think the county's paying about 8,000 above the contracted price, which is allowed in that contract.
We can get you a copy of that contract, if you'd like to see it.
Well, I...
And the contract does allow either entity with notice to terminate the contract. It's a pretty basic con... I mean, it's not a complicated document, I don't think.
I know this is a special meeting, it's nothing, you know, we can't add to the agenda, but I would suggest, since we only got one more meeting this month, the 25th, and then the contract lapses October 1st, or the last day of September 1st, whichever way it works out, but... There might be a... I'd suggest that we set up a group to meet with them to work on a contract in the future. We can't let it lapse. I don't guess it's because we have no alternative right this minute, unless you wanna build a dog pound somewhere and seeing me like there's already one here. I'm not going down that road for sure. I've been around a long time, not seen too many barns with a fence around them. We don't wanna do that, not here in this county. So that's my suggestion.
Okay, no, and that's one of the reasons we're talking about it today, because of that. Squirt, I guess.
I'm just... I wanna make sure that I understood, Max. I'm sorry, guys. It looks like, so September 9th, 2015, was the last change to the contract, is that correct?
That was their last amendment day.
That was the last amendment, okay. So we have not increased funding since then?
It gets increased by the CPI.
Okay, okay.
So whatever the inflation rate is, gets figured into that contract amount, which, I mean, I've got some figures as far as what's been paid over the last, I guess, decade. And the amount has gone up each year over the last decade.
So I guess the only thing I'll say is that, you know, I have several cats and several dogs, and it is really expensive to feed them right now. They're like feeding children at this point. So I'm just gonna throw out that I'm probably paying double for food for my animals than I used to. And so I think that's something we need to keep in mind. You know, they have to eat, and it is costing a lot more to feed them at this point and to care for them, so.
Okay, thank you.
So as I understand it, we're paying 74,000 a year now?
We pay 74,000.
Plus the salary of the animal control officer, his truck. What would that work out to be? I don't have the amount for the animal control. So...
I do.
From my... from my understanding, it's not... Okay, I'm just... I'm trying to educate myself, because I don't know.
So it should be actually in the...
It's in the budget.
Material that I gave, that I sent to Jack. I don't know if that's been distributed to you all.
Three pages, Carrie, that...
Yeah, so on the lap... on the page that says fiscal year 2324 animal control budgets by county.
Okay.
You'll see Franklin County is kind of in the middle there.
Yep.
We based this on counties that were a similar size, you know, with... that were operating their own animal control facility. So you can see that the number...
So the 106,500, is that the number?
That's the budgeted amount for last year. Now, I know in the Finance Committee meeting, Michael presented, or somebody presented some information about what the actual expenses were, so it was a little bit higher than that. 112,940, so what, 6440 dollars more than this lower number. I can also tell you what the per capita is, what that works out to for the... for each county per capita.
Could you walk us through this whole page, Carrie? Because I think it's eye-opening exactly what other counties are paying comparatively to us.
Right, so, I mean, just Scott County... So we had done this early, like in 2021. This was, you know, in some of our own budgeting. So these numbers are all from the different jurisdictions published, either expenses, direct expenses, or their published budget for that year. And the reason for that is because some of those counties did not have their actual appropriations done by the time that we did this, at the, you know, in July. So Georgetown, for instance, population 58,000, their animal control budget is 573,000, a little over 573,000. Pike County, you see... Now, the difference on Pike County, the reason that top number is 708,000, the lower number, 465,000, is their actual appropriations, because they had about 150,000 in their budget for building improvements and things that they didn't have actually spent at the end of June. Nicholasville, Jesmond County, you see their numbers. Of course, Franklin Counties speak for themselves. Shelby Counties, the next smallest county, and theirs is 360,000. And they do not do any cats. So they don't even take cats into their facility at all. Boyd County operates... Boyd County and Ashland operate much like Franklin County and the City of Frankfurt do in that Boyd County operates the shelter, the City of Ashland employs an additional animal control officer. And so that's what that 96,000 is. And then Nelson County, Barron County, and Glasgow are another pair that operate much the same way. And I have all of those, you know, reports, either from the county or from their websites. So now, the Frankfurt one is... The City of Frankfurt is an old number because their animal control budget is not detailed in their budget. It's incorporated in their police budget, so it's just...
They went ahead and matched where we were, I believe, last year, correct?
They did. Now, historically, the city has paid more than the county, up until two years ago, I think it was. And so that... that's where they are. So I can't tell you for sure what that actual number is. It's the only municipality that requires that I do an open records request for public information, so. Anyway, but that's what that... that's what that information is. Because I know, in particular, Squirt, Sebastian, you had said, well, what are other counties doing? And so we thought this would be helpful to... as an idea of what they're doing. I know there have been some questions and comments about the use of the resources that we receive from the city and county, in particular, some questions about how that money is applied to our spay-neuter program. That program is completely self-sufficient. We get grant funding from Bluegrass Area Development District. We have private funding for that. And then our fees are enough to cover that. So as you all know, because of the spay-neuter grant, that counties that apply for those funds are only eligible for them if they require that the animals that they put up for adoption are spayed and neutered. So that money is... and we match those funds. We don't actually ask the county to match those funds. We... the Humane Society matches them. About a third of our funding comes from our thrift store. So none of the money that is provided to us by the court or the city goes to the operations of our New Rich on Life thrift store. And they generate... they're currently generating about $200,000 a year. As I said, what we are looking at is a situation where our donors, who are... the vast majority are residents of Franklin County, are subsidizing what we believe is the responsibility of the court. We still believe that the rate that we're asking for is not the full amount that we would... that it would cost the county to operate its own facility. The state requires that that facility be open 25 hours a week. You know, we have guidelines that we have to follow. We have licenses that we have to maintain. We have certifications we have to maintain. You know, those are all part of... they're just the cost of doing business. So... and our goal has been to reach an agreement and get to that amount, 110,000, with the CPI, and go back into a period where we... the contract continues to renew. We don't wanna be here every year asking for money. We want very much to continue to do what we do, which we believe we do really, really well. As you all know, the new facility is an absolute beautiful facility. It is, if not the nicest, one of the nicest in the state. It is a facility that this court, although some of you were not part of that process, JW certainly was, Michael was, Sherry was, you all helped create. And, you know, I have become more involved in government since I've lived in Franklin County and been a part of this organization than I ever would have imagined in my life. And I spend an inordinate amount of time watching these meetings. And what I hear over and over again from both city and county officials is, we want nice things in Franklin County. You have a very nice thing down there on Companion Place. It is an exceptional facility. Please remember that we raised 4.5 million privately to pay for that facility with help from the city and county. Originally, our original ask was 1.6 million each from the city and county, with us contributing the other 1.6 million, possibly 2 million. At that time, that was 2018. So we were two years before the pandemic. And as you all... six years ago, the cost of doing business was very different than it is now. We're very proud of what we do. We're proud of the fact that we have... currently, we're operating with a 95% live release rate, which means that 95% of the animals that come into our facility leave alive and go onto homes. And that 5% is well above the... below the national numbers right now. Animal control facilities are drowning in animals in this country. So, you know, just today, we took in two dogs from a resident of the Simon House. You know, we provide services to people who are unhoused in this community. We provide services to people who... The vast majority of our clients are folks who are not afforded the security that most of us in this room have, so.
All right, go ahead, Squirt.
Carrie, if I could just ask you several questions, since you've already stated some things here. But let me first sort of just mention that, you know, the county, in your numbers reported here, had 257 animals, which breaks down for our allotment that we budgeted for this current year as $278 per animal. Do you have... the canine average cost per day is $316.50. So already, in my mind, at a minimum, we're off-putting cost of county's business onto private donations. And thank God, we have a community who really steps up and makes a challenge all the time, the thrift store alone, you know, bringing in a significant portion of your own income, that we can have a really high-class, first-class establishment that I'm proud that we developed. And, you know, when I was at the city, I was pushing for the initiative and said, at that point, I've been hearing this request and this talk for 25 years, since I was in middle school volunteering at the Humane Society, this talk about a need for a facility, and we finally built one. I never thought we'd be back at having conversation about, you know, not meeting the minimum to maintain the operation of that facility, but hopefully, we'll take care of that here. Could you... could you just reiterate the request that you all made to us? And I apologize that that didn't come to this full body for consideration yet. But could you reiterate what those costs actually go to in terms of your operations, that total allocation request? And let's also reiterate that unlike even some of the other entities that are gonna present tonight, this is a contract, a financial contract for services between the fiscal court and a private entity. That doesn't stand in almost any other instance, except for maybe the elderly center or the senior citizens... senior citizens center. Could you just walk us through, maybe so I and everybody that may be listening understands exactly what the request is and what those, those amounts are going to pay for?
Right. So the, one of the other pieces of information I provided was the cost of care and then the cost of care with our payroll. We currently employ at the Humane Society, eight full-time employees and three part-time employees. We are, our census today is 175 animals. That includes, and some of you may have seen in the news, last week, we took in seven dogs on a bike quarantine alone. Those are a little different than a stray hold. In other words, we have to hold them for 10 days. There is, you know, there are some other restrictions on how we hold those animals. That is almost an entire kennel space for us right now. At, at intake, all of the animals, of course, are examined. We do vaccinate, basic vaccinations at intake. And that is about disease control, because we can't have unvaccinated animals coming in and potentially being exposed to something. Imagine how you would feel if your dog came to the shelter and you took it home and three days later it had kennel cough, you know? That's just not, that's just not how we operate. We deworm them. We provide flea and tick treatment, because oftentimes they come in infested with fleas and/or ticks. That is just a, it's just a basic standard of what that involves. It's a little bit less for cats than it is for dogs, because cats don't require that second vaccination. And then, of course, every animal in the state of Kentucky over dog or cat over the age of four months has to be vaccinated for rabies. So that's incorporated in this as well. And once they become, you know, under our care, we have a responsibility to provide that. And we have two shelter veterinarians, they're contract veterinarians, come in twice a week that take care of the rabies vaccination, which is, has to be given by a veterinarian. And they also do, you know, care. We also have an agreement with a veterinarian who does other things beyond just the basics and spay neuter. And they, we have an agreement with them that affords us significantly discounted shelter pricing. And they're also, you know, if I call at 3:00 in the afternoon and say, I have a dog that just came in that was hit by a car, it's already on its way. They're, they have made themselves available to us in that way. Right now, our average length of stay for a dog is 21 days, which is well below the national average right now. And for cats, it's about 18 days, which, again, is incredibly low. We have, at times, historically, had length of stays in excess of 100 days. Now, sometimes what pushes that up are things like court cases, which we've been through, large court cases, you know, going back, in my memory, anyway, as far back as the Coy case, which was over 60 animals, Backwoods Pets, which was a pet store, which was over 200 animals, you know? And we have, you know, the one case that's still in the court system right now, but all of those animals have been homed or moved on. So I don't know, does that answer your question?
Mostly, but just, just to confirm what you've already said, the new leash on life, just some misconceptions I've heard in the community, I thought we'd, it's a good opportunity to clear up, right? None of the city or county's funds are going to operate the thrift store in terms of the utilities, the rent of the building, or the operations of the salary of the few people that are paid, correct?
No. In our monthly financial report, it, our budget is broken down, our financial report is broken down by operations. And so spay neuter is considered its own, the shelter and new leash on life. New leash on life operates with a net revenue after paying the manager, the utilities, the rent, insurance, everything. Right now, they're operating at a little over 200,000 a year in net revenue. It's a, and, and it also provides the service to this community. Because we are, you know, we assist all of the agencies in town. If there's somebody who is moving into an apartment and needs supplies, things, those things are always offered to them in every case. They work a lot with Salvation Army, Simon House, with the men's shelter, as do we. You know, if somebody in those situations has an animal and they need to hang on to it, we take those animals. A dog came in last night, 11:30 last night, because its owner is currently incarcerated. You know, that's what, that's what we do.
So just, I like to break things down really simply, so that people can pick out the sound bites, right? So the, the thrift store operates and pays its own?
Yes.
Everything. It is completely self-sufficient and provides the Humane Society with about 200,000.
It only has one paid operator, to my understanding?
Correct.
And everyone else, which are dozens and dozens of people, are all volunteers to that facility.
Yeah.
So I've just heard that.
They, they average about 1,200 volunteer hours a month to operate that facility. So, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna give Squire Sebastian a chance. She's had her hand up.
Thank you, Judge. And thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for the information. So with the last meeting, I had asked our county attorney to talk to us in regard to what the statute says, that the county's responsibility. Do you have that tonight and can you share that? Just so we can balance everything that we're hearing, so that we hear everything that we need to be responsible for and factor that in with the information that you're sharing too.
Well, and I think she's elaborated on several of those points, required to have, you know, a seven-day hold when you get an animal, required to have an animal control officer. So those are, and 24-hour surveillance facility is?
Required to be, to operate 25 hours a week, be open to the public 25 hours a week.
So.
24, 25.
So that's what you're, that's what you're looking at as far as what's required?
And the terminology in the statute is, is it animal care? Is it animal control? Is it animal?
I think it's deemed control, not necessarily care.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Okay, thank you.
And the Department of Ag has a animal care and control advisory board that guides communities in their operations. And we're also, also under the jurisdiction of the Kentucky Board of Veterinary Examiners.
Okay. Well, we got some things to discuss, but I know we have other people here to present, so.
Judge, I've got just a few other questions.
Okay.
Sorry. Carrie, just, could you reiterate for us the term of stay, the average length of stay right now for, for animals? I've heard that, I just want to go after some of these rumors in the community and straighten some things out once and for all, because I hear some rumors that you will keep animals for two years at a time. And I don't think that's, you know, quite the, the case, maybe on a certain cases, but...
You said dogs, 21 days, cats, 18 days, right?
Correct.
Right. If it's a court case and things, it's...
No, if it's a court case, then we have to hold that animal. And the, the way the current contract is written is that there's no additional cost to the county for that unless we exceed, and I think it's vague language, I think it says, you know, unless there's an exceptional number of animals. We've defined that in our contract with the city as more than five. And, you know, but we're at the mercy of the courts in how those cases are adjudicated. I mean, we are, we're no longer holding the animals for the Adams Lane case from 2020 and 2022, because the county attorney and then the Commonwealth's attorney worked very hard to get them released to us as quickly as they possibly could. But that was 38 dogs the first time and 14 the second time. Now, 38 dogs required us to completely clear that old facility in order to make space for those dogs. And so in that case, then there is a per diem that kicks in, which is $10 a day for, for a dog and $5 a day for a cat. And then I think there have been two instances in the last, since I've been here, that we billed the county for the, any additional services.
All right, are we good?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I think it's time that we needed to have a renegotiation. We have a facility we can all be proud of, and I think we're getting a fantastic discount, frankly, for what we're getting. And it's, it's very obvious to me, at least in reading your numbers and seeing presentations and conversating with some of the board members, that truly, the donors of this community are supporting the facility that we need to be supporting, because our actions are, as a county anyways, a county government, our actions are, are putting an undue burden that isn't sustainable on the Humane Society and making everyone that's volunteering, thankfully, giving their time, work a lot harder to meet that deficit. Can you, can you just speak to exactly what, or how the additional 36,000 was, came upon? I understand that that has been a discussion of your board to the value that makes you all effectively solvent for the amount of operations that you're providing for the city and the county. Am I right in that understanding?
Carrie, I mean, ultimately, the 36 is what the board came up with, right?
Yes. Because the, because the, what, you know, what we, when I first started, you know, we were paying people $8 an hour. We, we still don't start people at what is considered a living wage in Franklin County. But we do offer, you know, a better starting pay. It's actually $12 an hour now. And we've worked very intentionally to move that up as quickly as we can. So a big part of it is in what we are able to pay our employees and what we're able to offer them. It's not, it's, it's not glamorous work. They are not there, you know, to get rich, but you'd be surprised how many of them have made a career out of it and are, you know, and they are very, very dedicated to their work. The, the other part of that is that the, you know, we, we don't expect that the thrift store is going to be able to improve its revenue more than it had. I mean, the fact that it's where it is now is really phenomenal, and this is in, in large part due to the volunteers and our thrift store manager, Jody Spalding, who's done an exceptional job down there. But we, we want to make sure that our organization remains financially stable for the future. Some of us are not getting any younger. You know, Sam retired. I am well into my 60s and will be following him before too long. And we, I, I believe, have been exceptional stewards of the resources that this community, this court, the city have provided us, and we want to be able to continue to do that. But we do believe that it, it's not an equitable relationship at this point, and we need it to be so that we can continue to do that.
And just one other thing, just quickly, Judge, if I could. There's this, this discussion point going around, that there was a presentation made to the city and the county at the time about building the new facility, that a number was presented, and something was said to the effect that if you all fund at this level, we won't come back and ask for any increases. It was my understanding that that request was 1.6 million per entity, and each entity only funded it a million dollars. Could you just elaborate a little bit on, on what that statement was and how that affected?
That is my recollection, that the, that the question put to Sam Marcus at the time was, well, are you going to ask for, what about an increase in funding? And keep in mind, this conversation, as I recall it, was around 2018, 2019. I don't, I don't recall exactly.
It was 19, I don't remember specifically.
Okay, so 2019. There's been some reference to a video. I've not been able to access that. So I can't say for certain, but my understanding and my recollection is that what Sam's response was, if you fully fund the request, then we will make every effort not to increase our fees. But, you know, there's some things that are just simply out of our control. At the time, the county actually did not give us a million dollars. They gave us 800,000, and the city gave us a million. And then we did come back and ask for additional funding, which the county did provide. And at that time, it was our understanding that the city and county were going to manage the road construction. Keep in mind, at that time, we were also still looking at the property adjacent to Capital View Park.
On the connector.
It became obvious that that property was untenable to develop in the way that we needed to develop it. The city was gracious enough to afford us the property off of Flynn Avenue. But we still ended up spending about 385,000 on a road that may or may not be a city street.
Well, on that note.
So.
All righty.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming in.
And I hope that if you have not visited the new facility, that you will please do so. I know Richard has been there, and Eric's been there, Michael's been there, I think Jack and Stephanie have been there, Kelly's been there. I don't think I've seen you there. That doesn't mean you haven't been there, but please come by and see it.
Sherry's been.
Sherry's been, okay. And, and know that it has caught the attention of several other counties in the state. Mead County, Mercer County, Oldham County, Jefferson County have all come to see us about what we're doing. And now we're expecting some folks from out east to, to start coming by this fall and looking at what we're doing and trying to model what we are doing, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got two things. One of them, I want to take issue with one thing you said. Because you're, might be in your 60s, don't mean anything about retirement.
Well...
All righty, thank you, Carrie.
I can tell you from experience, forget it. Just keep right on going.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All righty, next, I believe, we're gonna switch it up a little bit, and Ms. Kelly's gonna talk to us from Thornhill Education Center.
Kelly Anderson, Executive Director at Thornhill Education Center. I apologize for my $4 general glasses, because my dog, Chance, ate my prescription glasses this morning. So if I'm looking at you funny, or I fall down, these are 1.75, so not sure what's gonna happen. Wanted to just let you know that, sorry, it's not, stop. So in 2017, I came to Frankfurt as an instructor in the jail and at Thornhill Education Center, and three years ago, I took over as executive director. Thought it would be an interim position, but obviously, someone has not, not fired me yet. I, when I got there, we, all we did was GED and ESL. That was it, okay? We did a lot of it. We did it successfully. We did it, and we were in the top 10 in the entire state. We were very successful in the jail, as we still are. KYAE, Kentucky Adult Education, suggests that we are in the jail 10, at least 10 hours a week. We try and double, if not triple, that because of the population in the jail. Generally speaking, you can get a GED or some sort of certification from 30% of the inmates. We have continued with our GED journey. We have continued in the jail. We now have a population of over 40 people with ESL. We talked to K-State today, and we're gonna be integrating their ESL program with our ESL program to even provide more strength. We have also talked to Dr. Akup Akapo, I always say it wrong, Akapo, with citizens of Franklin County. If they receive a high school diploma, they can go to K-State free of charge. I sat down with him, and I said, okay, what about a GED? And he said to me that he thought that K-State would make that happen. So that is massive progress for our students. We have a family literacy program, which we received a grant from the NCFL, National Center for Family Learning, which I did not, I did not know existed until the judge executive decided to introduce me to the CEO, Dr. Felicia Smith Cummings. No, it's Cummings Smith, sorry.
Cummings Smith.
Opposite, opposite way. Since then, we have been on a one-year journey to become the first in the country as a family learning community. This is well on its way. We're in the final stages of making this happen. You're sitting there going, what in the heck is that? What that is, is leveraging all our different organizations to work together for the common goal. Our common goal are the people of Frank... Our common goal are the people of Franklin County and of Frankfurt. We are here to make things better for them with education. We also offer what's called IET, Integrated Educational Training, which we can now, we can now teach for them to get their peer support specialist, their para educator. We also are home to a lot of, we're top of the hill, top of that hill. You've been there. We do a lot of things. We've got a lot of people in this, in this building. The one that keeps me the busiest and on my toes is obviously the Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation. They take up the entire basement, which the fiscal court in previous years has helped because we used grant money from the fiscal court to improve our air, to replace our air conditioning and heating units, not only in the basement, but also in the gymnasium, which you all probably have been in, in that facility. We also have the Bluegrass Theater Guild in there. They do a lot of their rehearsals. We also have Grace Awakening Church that is now on the stage. We have the garden in the back. We have food boxes every two weeks from Locals. We participate in that program. And we have also expanded our hours by over five hours per week. And now we have a, by appointment only on Saturdays and Sundays. All of our employees are, we have three full-time employees, the rest are part-time. We also are the first in the county, in the city, that offer Narcotics Anonymous twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then we offer, because of Amy and the Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation, Al-Anon and Alateen on Thursday nights.
This one's God's Pantry Pizza.
Oh, and we do God's Pantry Pizza. Oh, there we go.
They have that on Thursday night.
On Thursday night, they go and they get, the senior center brings the pizza to Thornhill. It goes to all of the students that are in there. We kind of track how many students we get a year and also just people that come in. We are a warming and cooling facility. There is continuous, oh, the other thing, we are Franklin County's, we are the home to Franklin County's IOP program. So, they are in there from nine to one every day, and that are, those are students of Franklin County.
And the Innovation Center now too, right?
Yes, the Innovation Center is now in there as well, and the Innovation Center just received a $75,000 grant to start a drone program for children, for middle schoolers. But we are going to expand that because it is an official certification, and I believe it's FA107 is what they're going to be teaching, because this realm of, drones are becoming a massive thing in this society. We are very excited about the jail, adding the SAP and SOAR program, which, that will increase our numbers. Our primary grant funder is Kentucky Adult Education, and that's under Workforce Development. We do everything we can possibly do for students. We do every, we do, we still offer free transportation, we still offer free childcare. We have Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation, where they have actually, one of their employees came in on a Saturday and watched a woman's child so she could take two GED tests. We will go the extra mile. I am an absolute why not. I will always be like that. It might get me in trouble sometimes, but I am a yes. If we can help people, we are going to help people. And we will find a way. We have had a great relationship with everybody in the community, and I'm telling you, I lived in Richmond for, how old am I? Not 60 yet. I lived in Richmond for 32 years. I now live in Frankfurt, and the things that are going on in this community, in this county, are above and beyond what is going on, what I see in Madison County. The one criticism I have, and Amy and I talked about, there's too much to do. Like, you gotta pick and choose, "Oh, I want to do this, I want to do this." There's a lot to do in this, this county. As you can tell, I'm a little bit like a rat on acid. I apologize. Our mission, and my mission since taking over as Executive Director, was to change and not just be Thornhill Education Center, but be Thornhill Community Center, where you can get whatever you need. You can get education, you can get food, you can get help, you can be supported. And one of my big things, I always tell everyone, everyone is welcome at Thornhill, regardless of who you are. We had an individual that was homeless, came in to cool off. No one, no one said an ill word about this woman. We just came to help, and we actually, we get a lot of brand-new donations from people, so we were able to give her some socks, some shoes, a couple t-shirts, and then give her some food. So, the bottom line is Thornhill will and will continue to be where people can come. We will serve people, and we will always do what is right. And we're excited that we are presenting at the National Center for Family Learning Convention this year in Louisville, and we are so excited to be the first. And this was due to you, with that one introduction, we are the first in the country as the NCFL's first family learning community. Questions? I told you I'd be quick.
Any questions for Kelly on all the good things that Thornhill's doing for our community?
No, I just want to say thank you. I love everything you all do. You're phenomenal, and I love your energy. Awesome.
We do have Friendsgiving. I will, I will make this announcement. We do have Friendsgiving. Do you want me to maybe say what we're trying to do, or no? No, okay. It'll be a recognition of an individual. How about that? On October 30th, Friendsgiving, that is where all the restaurants in Frankfurt donate food. I know a lot of you have been to it. It is basically the most gluttonous buffet you've ever been to. And we invite you out to that. That's 11:30 to 1 o'clock, and we hope to see you there. And if anyone's interested in buying the 1918 Jaguar replica car, just hit me up. That's our next fundraiser.
Very cool. Kelly, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, I just want to say thank you too, Kelly. You all signed on to a recent grant application we have for composting that I hope is going to expand that community garden operations even more, and you all are always at the forefront of finding grant opportunities and bringing them about to the public. So, I think that's an incredible service beyond what you're already doing.
Thank you.
And I want to say, I said I might be 60.
I didn't say you were. I think the judge did.
Alright, Kelly, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, take care. Alrighty, I believe next Amy's up.
I have a couple slides I believe Andrew's going to share. If you remember, just a quick 24 months ago, we had zero staff and we had no office. So, I'm excited to be here tonight to be able to share an update. Andrew, you can go on to our next slide. I wanted to review super quick our programs, because what I'm finding out is people in the community really don't know what all we do, and I just wanted to show this picture of everyone that's involved with us. This is a picture of our board, our staff, our contract staff, part-time staff, our finance committee, our advisory council. Altogether, there's about 40 people helping to lead our organization. Our original Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant provided funding for four positions. My position, our chief staff position, our social worker in the jail who's here tonight, and a director of development. That person's role is the development of our programs, ensuring evidence-based curriculum, measurable outcomes, our grant reporting, all the fun stuff. This grant also covers the cost of our parenting class instructors in the jail, a part-time office assistant, and our video visitation coordinator. Our second grant through the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice, it's a 12-month grant. We've applied for a renewal. It provides for two part-time program coordinators on our teen outreach team, our middle school and high school programs. Third grant, we're a sub-awarty of a five-year SAMPA grant through Yes Arts. It's a prevention framework, something we're super excited about. There's a lot involved there. This grant required as part of the application that you name a data analyst, and Elizabeth Treblehorn was the only one smart enough to do it, and she loves it, so she's the data analyst. And we were able to bring in soon-to-be Dr. Quee Smith, who ran the psychology department at Kentucky State University as our director of development. This grant also provides Rebecca Redding, our director of marketing. We have her 75% of the week, 25% of the week, she's with Just Say Yes program. It also provides 0.25% of my salary in an executive director role, which loosened up some of the funds with our original grant. All of our staff, with the exception of our bookkeeper, our grant-funded positions, to put this in context, we're here at the two-year mark of a three-year grant. So, we really, we have 12 months left of our first original four positions. We fully intend to write for an expansion of that grant, which, which we can direct apply for. That's something we've talked about with our grant administrator. We feel great about it, but of course, nothing's guaranteed. So, we are looking for additional grants to sustain our staff. Looking forward, we are the recipient of a state opioid abatement grant that will fund one staff position. It's titled Prevention Specialist, but this person will work with juveniles in Franklin County actively using opioids. We have identified 15 to 20 youth. They'll also work with youth who are greatly at risk of using opioids. Just yesterday, I was with the administrative office, of course, they had a recovery symposium, and I shared about this, and this is, this is really groundbreaking for the state, that a nonprofit would offer direct services like that to adolescents in our county. We also have two grant applications submitted that we'll hear about the end of this month that would expand our Amachi mentoring program with a second staff. And just to kind of explain that, we are at 39 matches, and I feel like we're probably going to cut it at 50, because only one person can manage about 50 matches. So, I'm hoping that that funding comes through, because we provide that direct match support with all parties involved. That, that second grant that we applied for would also expand some of our services support in the jail. Alright, to provide a current update regarding where we are with our OJJVP grant, if you'll go to the next slide. The three objectives of that grant, obviously, were to work with incarcerated parents, supporting the needs of their minor children. The second objective was to provide a one-to-one mentoring program. The third was to provide positive youth development programs for youth. So, our Amachi of Frankfurt program, Trina Schimmler is absolutely amazing. It, it took a while to, that was, this was an area that I was slow to move forward on because we're responsible for these matches. We use a best practice manual from the federal government. We're not 100% on everything yet, but we are working to do our due diligence on that. But Trina does an amazing job with our matches. We'll recognize Judge and also Tammy West are two of our mentors. We provide monthly mentor support and training. Next slide, please. I wanted to show the pictures tonight, because I want you to see their faces. These are people we're working with. Our middle and high school youth, the hiring of the two part-time coordinators, Raven and Tisa, was essential to actually just building the infrastructure of this program. We also have two youth advocates, who, one of those positions is funded through fiscal court. We have about more than 50 youth that we meet to, meet with outside of school. The vision of this program is really that we'll have about 20 youth advocates, because we know that there's more than 208 through 12th graders who are impacted by incarceration in Frankfurt. And so, a youth advocate has a caseload of 12 to 15 kids. Essentially, they're a paid mentor. They're constantly calling, texting, keeping up with the kids, communicating with their parents. And then we get together for a large group meeting once a month. We use an evidence-based, positive youth development curriculum, so there's actual content of what we're doing. I wanted to share a quick story here. We have a young man, when he was in middle school, all F's, fighting on the road to being involved in the juvenile justice system, did not get along with his mother, hated his father. We fought a huge battle for him to become a part of the gifted and talented program in school. Now, he's a junior in high school, honor roll student, football player. He is in the BCTC dual-credit program. He will graduate with his associate's degree. He will be the first in his family to ever have a college degree. He is taking the SAT in October. He plans to go to college out of state and play football. And his father is getting ready to be in reentry, and he has a plan for that of setting boundaries and how to move forward with their relationship. So, I share that because this is life-changing. We're truly breaking some generational curses. I'm not saying that we're special, I'm saying that the work that we're doing is special. Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation, we're not just a one-to-one mentoring program, we're not just big brothers, big sisters. We're not just offering a middle and high school after-school program. We're not just offering a massive school-based program, where more than 350 kids attend weekly for social, emotional learning, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And that program, under the direction of Quee Smith, the curriculum, well, a new curriculum, she is writing a new curriculum, it will roll out in January, and there's discussion of that being moved across the state to other school districts. We're not just supporting incarcerated parents and a reentry support. We aren't just offering a scholarship program for graduating seniors, that's a $1,000 award. Today, we've awarded 14. It's renewable for up to three additional years. We're not just doing just that. We're not just working with community partners and doing food distribution and basic need support and family literacy. We're doing all of that. We're not just doing, with the Just Say Yes program, offering $400 yes cards to all of our kids so that they can become involved in extracurricular activities. We're doing all of those things within 24 months. What we have going on is special. Kelly was talking about that. My staff is an amazing team. Our community partners are amazing. What is a whole other presentation, which you've probably met with Amelia Berry from Just Say Yes, but she gathers the fresh local data from our Franklin County youth survey. That's amazing, rich information for grant writing. We just presented at a statewide annual conference Monday, Prevent Child Abuse Kentucky, with the annual Kids Are Worth It Conference. Our session was a double room and it was packed. We asked the question, this is a statewide conference, we asked the question, "How many of you are offering programs to kids in your community that have incarcerated parents?" Two frisky coordinators from Anderson County raised their hand because they do crush, because we help them start crush. And a lady from Louisville raised her hand and said that she supports parents in reentry, not the kids. That was it. So, that was just very telling to me, what we have across the state. Next slide, please. Our work within the jail, Quee and Debbie and I have met with Jailer Hopper and her team. We feel good about the transition. We're continuing to meet with parents, we're continuing to offer parenting classes. We have a men's class that is active right now. They mentioned the expansion with the SOAR program with the women. We're excited about being a part of that. My biggest excitement here is we are going to start what's called- And my biggest excitement here is we are going to start what's called 4H Life in the jail. And, and I'm, I don't, I won't explain it all, but I really don't have time. But the short part of that is, our 4H associate will be able to meet with parents in the jail. It will run like a 4H meeting, they'll learn civic engagement. But the content, they will learn positive youth development concepts. So for example, they'll talk about confidence. How do you speak to your child about confidence? I need that class as a parent. When a visit occurs, the parent will actually do activities with their child about confidence. So this is real work that we're doing. And, let's see, I also wanted to show here, we have started a reentry support group for men. This was a grant that Quee wrote through a fatherhood initiative. Our very first gathering, we went bowling. We had six men and 19 children. I don't think that's happening anywhere in Kentucky. And this group meets every other Monday. They continue to meet. And a couple of them were trained in the parent cafe model. They lead father cafes. A group of men get together and talk about being a dad. Alright, so where are we currently? First, I want to inform you that we have a financial page on our website. And we want to be transparent about our finances. We aren't rolling in the dough, because we have some grants. We don't have a ton of major gift donors. And you can find information on our website. Our operating budget, the cost of doing business, not our staff, not our programs, is about $60,000. This is insurance, this is accounting, this is printing, this is taxes, all the fun stuff. What we have put in place, what our board has put in place, it's called a sustainer program. It's a commitment of $300 a year for five years. It's $25 a month. We need 200 sustainers to take care of this part of our budget. We currently have 26. So I just want to put a quick plug in, next Thursday, we are having a Watch and Learn at the Foundry. You can register for that on our website, or just call us. And there'll be information about the sustainer program, as well as our funding needs for sponsorship goals for 2025. Where are we currently in terms of kids? This school year, unfortunately, our numbers are the same. We continue to have more than 800 children in Frankfurt impacted by incarceration. We are literally talking about Western Hills High School. And I want you to think about that. I'm a Western Hills graduate. Western Hills has about 880 kids, students. So we're literally talking about walking through the hallways, and every single student has an incarcerated parent. And I'm not trying to share a bleak image, but I want to be realistic, because we know kids impacted by incarceration have multiple, multiple adverse childhood experiences. They're living in poverty, they're dealing with substance use situations. There, there's abuse and neglect, there's major, major trauma. So one of my biggest takeaways from the conference, the Department of Public Health had a presentation. And their entire point was the mitigator of adverse childhood experiences is increasing positive childhood experience. It's really common sense, like, did they really need to research that? But that, that's exactly what we do. And it's, it's the mentoring, I just listed them. It's the mentoring, it's the extracurricular sponsorship. It's figuring out the transportation to get the kid there, to see if they want to be a part of that. It's all, filling in all those gaps. And it's the social-emotional support that we provide. The state is actually expanding mandated reporting of child abuse and neglect to what's referred to as mandated supporting. And what's interesting is, there's, there's not a model for that. One of the sessions I attended, UK was presenting, and it was actually a research study, because they wanted everyone in the room to put on paper, what is mandated supporting look like? It looks like Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation. That's exactly a big component of it. And what I want, for our organization, we're ready to do a deeper dive. The kids and families we're working with, what I consider, it's, they're low-hanging fruit. We're offering programs, this is who wants to be involved. We're ready to go to the next level. And that's gonna involve some tougher conversations with our families, with our kids, and with our community. And I call it going to the messy. And we're just ready for it. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and do it. So Charles Kendall is really way better, way more qualified than me to talk about this. But it's, it's, the term is upstream prevention work. We're ready to do that type of work. And what I'm saying to you is, we need a Boys and Girls Club in Frankfurt. Frankfurt is only one of two state capitals in the entire country that does not have a Boys and Girls Club. And I know some people aren't aware of what that is. And please come talk to me, we'll, I'll let you know what a Boys and Girls Club of America is. But it's a place for kids to come to after school and during the summer. They have a healthy, safe, supportive, nurturing environment that helps them dream about what their great future is. That's the motto, great futures start here. And so, we have a committed team. We have competent people at the table. What we need to do is just make it happen. And this is a conversation that, for me, started last October. I received a phone call that connected me to someone in Western Kentucky. And we have gone through several conversations. We've surveyed, we've met with people. And we just need to come to the table and figure out how we're gonna do this. And I'm a team player. I want all of us, I want all of us to be successful, to thrive. And I didn't really come here tonight to ruffle any type of feathers. I certainly did not know the Humane Society was presenting tonight. I had no idea what the agenda is. I have something to say. We have more than 800 kids impacted by incarceration. They need a place to go to after school. We don't have 800 dogs in the Humane Society. We don't have 800 cats in the Humane Society. I'm a dog lover. I have two dogs that sleep in the bed with me every night. I don't love them more than my three girls. And my Wanda Joyce kids are my kids. I know their birthday, I know their favorite color. And I need you all to, I need them to be your kids. I need them to be kids. And if we can raise $4 million for, for a place for animals to go, we can raise $4 million for my kids to go. And that's what I have to say tonight. I need your help, I need your expertise, I need your knowledge, I need your connections. I don't like going to sleep at night, knowing that my kids need a place to go to. And we gotta make it happen. That's why we are.
Amy, thank you very much. You all do spectacular work. I think everybody in the court here realizes that. But I think this is a kind of a wake-up call, that we do need to help you all some more. You know, I mean, there's a lot going on in this whole community. But I think with the Boys and Girls Club and starting to get some momentum, I think we, we need to have some more conversations to figure out how we can, we can help you all more. So I appreciate everything you all do, you know that. We talk all the time, I mean, the, the grants you've gotten. I mean, I went to DC with Elizabeth that time, you know, it's an eye-opening, even for the nation, things, right here in Frankfurt, so. What questions does the court have for Amy? I mean, I know we could sit here and probably talk all night on this topic, and we'll talk as long as you all want to.
She's not allowed to come back in, because every time she comes in, I cry. So we're just not allowed to do that anymore. I'm totally kidding, Amy. You all do the most amazing work I've ever seen. And I sincerely have never in my life seen so many women work so hard. I mean, it's, it's really incredible. So thank you for what you do. And I, you know, we, we talk all the time about how we have to balance things. And without programs like yours, we cannot have a healthy community. We just can't. These kids are growing up, and we can either do something about what's going on with them now, or they'll end up in the jail. And so, we have to do something. And I, I promise, I will do everything I can. Thank you.
I just want to say, I have those kids in my classroom. I've probably got 30, about 38 right now. I see them every day. I see the work that you do. I see the work that the people that are associated with Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation does. Every day, it's something that hits them and attacks them that we can't even begin to imagine. It's hard for me, as a dad, to see the things that I see and, and wonder if my daughters went through some of the things that these kids went through, go through, how, how they would, how they would be, how they would react. And I, I can't even imagine. I totally agree with you. You know, I was in the beginning of, I was on a task force of folks that, that worked for the, figuring out the direction of the Humane Society. And, and one thing that I always told them is, these animals in our community deserve to be treated well, but they don't deserve to be treated better than our children in our community. And I agree with you 100%, and I thank you for all that you do.
How can we?
I was just gonna, I apologize, Judge.
Don't apologize, go, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Squar.
Thank you, thank you, Judge.
Perfect.
You know, I appreciate you coming, and this is gonna make me also have great pause with the work that you do and with what the senior center does. Because I try to put my hands to a lot of things. And, and the good thing is, is I can put it to the full gamut, children to seniors. And when I put my hands to it, my heart is there too. And so, when, when you have that, you have a tremendous amount of commitment from all of the volunteers that you are bringing in. But it does take more than the people who serve their hearts up on the plate. And so, you putting a face to that, to this body, is very important. And I appreciate it, and appreciate you coming and showing the depth of, of need and the breadth of the program, from, from its extremely humble beginnings to where it is just ready to, to springboard and, and blossom, so that other communities can come in and, and say, how, how? Because it really is, how did you do so much in such a short period of time? Because it's, it's nothing less than amazing for anybody who's been there to see. Well, I thank you for that.
Squar, always.
Amy, I just, I want to thank you and all of, everyone that's been working in, in this capacity. I mean, no one gets paid enough, no one has enough time in their day to volunteer. But you're, I, I know you all know, but you're, you're changing not only these children's lives and their parents' lives, I think it's going to be multifold, multi-generational. We're gonna see the impacts in this community. And I, I thought years ago, and I remember having some conversations about, if we could just partner every child in this community, we're a small enough community to do it, to partner them with a mentor that can give them alternative pathways forward in their life, that we would see drastic change within a decade that will last forever. So I'm, I'm so appreciative of what you all are doing. And I, I think it's going to just blossom into a greater program that's, that's gonna be replicated far beyond our, our little capital city. So I, I, I'm excited about what the, the future holds. My, my question, I suppose, for the immediacy, is that in a week and a half, we start the SAP and SOAR program. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on, because those, those females that are gonna come in for that program are gonna be from kind of all over the, the state, right? I'm wondering if you put any thought into how we can serve those folks that are not necessarily going to be home-based here, and their children aren't going to be here. Because I would sincerely like to see that be part of that, that program.
So we're having those discussions as well. I, I have, we have monthly meetings with our federal administrator. And she is, she is willing for us to open and adjust and modify however we need to, based on what we're working with. Because it is two years later than, actually, three years from when we wrote the grant. So we are willing to, to morph and change however we need to.
Fantastic.
That we can provide our, our women's parenting class to them and, and potentially our, the parent cafes that we were leaving.
I, I really hope, you know, the, let me just speak to something broader here. I understand CAECO is making jail funding one of their primary objectives this year, because these jails are nearly bankrupting every county. We need more funding. And I think it is burdened upon this court, as the capital city, to come up with some solutions or some recommendations to take to the state. Because I believe that not only should we get a stipend from the state for inmates that we house in our county that is increased, but I think there also needs to be some funding directly associated with those prisoners for other services, for family services, that need to be part of the conversation. Because we're seeing the problems in every single community across the state and the whole nation, of course. And, and we can't, we can't pay for the jails and keep those facilities operational, much less try to meet the need about true reentry and whatever rehabilitation we, we want to do. So it's gotta be a conversation, and I think you are gonna be important in that conversation with the state this, this next fiscal year, about taking a more holistic approach to just warehousing people, which I, I've always hated. So hopefully, we can, maybe it'll be even broader. Maybe we can make a bigger impact nationwide, and, and starting here.
So Amy, in closing, our call to action is, you need help with the Boys and Girls Club. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
I see a couple heads nodding, so, okay.
Yes, that's what I need.
We'll get together and figure that out, and we'll, we'll help get to. We've been to a couple meetings, you know, and things like that, but I probably need to circle back with you, and we'll, we'll help you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep. Next.
I'm back.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. We love, we love seeing you. Go ahead and tell everybody on TV land who you are.
Marshall Jenkins, I'm the executive director of Capital City Activity Center, which is...
The best in the state?
Yes, sir. Which is the senior center here in Franklin County. Thank you all for having me. Just wanted to say, I am in awe of the women that have come up here and have presented tonight. I mean, just hearing what everyone's doing, what, I've said it a million times, what an awesome community Franklin County and the city of Frankfurt. What, who we are, it just speaks to the greatness of what we, we represent in our community. And hats off to you guys. I mean, really, it's, it's pretty amazing. So I'm in the senior world. Anyone 50 and older is considered a senior. I'm right there.
50 and over. 50 and over?
Yeah, take that back.
Marshall, you, you said at a meeting at the library last week, what is that percentage now of our population in our county?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to go. Just curious, I always ask this when I come. Do you know what the percentage of the population are 50 and older for Franklin County?
18%.
What was it?
18%.
I'm going like 63.
It's actually over 38%.
Everybody, I know.
So I can just say, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say that the county is old. I'm going to say that the county is wise and mature. And we offer great education and, I don't know. We, we have goodness to offer to our, our younger generation, so that's awesome. So we provide all kinds of services, whether it's outreach, transportation. We are the mills on wheels for the county and city. We provide congregate lunches. We have health and nutrition and all kinds of education programs. and nutrition, and all kinds of education programs, exercise programs, helping with housing, helping secure different type of medical needs. We give out medical equipment. I don't know. We do anything senior. But I just want to bring something to your attention tonight. We have quite a few seniors that, along with Amy, seniors taking care of grandkids due to incarceration. And it's hard. And I understand what you're saying. There's all kinds of situations, whether you're dealing with the children or you're dealing with the senior that's having to take care of the children. There's so many different things that's going on there. Our food pantry is probably one of the largest in the county. Last year, we picked up over a hundred and eighty thousand pounds of food. We gave out over seventy-two hundred food boxes. And we offer a shopping experience, because I don't know what you like, I don't know what you are allergic to. So, I wanted to start a food pantry. That was a little different. Our food pantry has been recognized on the national level and received an award for that. So, we're helping to help seniors take care of grandkids. A lot of them come through the food pantry every Friday to help sustain that grocery bill so they can purchase other things. They're not having to decide, do I have to, can I eat? Or can I buy a prescription? Can I pay for utilities? Can I pay for my rent? You know, it's real-life situation. With that being said, last year, we delivered and served over fifty-one thousand meals to the city and county residents, senior residents. We had a lot of different grant fundings last year that has now ended. We did not know how that was going to affect us. Last year, the nutrition, the funding we received for nutrition was over five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. This year, we were going to receive three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand and change, difference of two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars shortage. We have put pen to paper, and our estimated cost this year for meals is going to be around four-hundred, five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars to sustain this. So, that's actually going to leave a shortage of over a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars to provide meals that, just no additional people coming in needing meals. That's just to sustain what we are doing right now. Let me say this. It was mandated by the...
Go ahead and say what you were going to say. I was just going to ask a question in a moment.
It was mandated by the federal government and the state that we are to feed and service all seniors, no matter what. The funding was there. Now, the funding is not there. The state cut funding for meals from fourteen million last year to ten million this year. We are in the Bluegrass Region, the largest region of the state. Just to sustain the amount of meals that we provided last year is already a shortfall for our region of over a million dollars. My question is, I, well, it's not a question, it's going to be a statement. I don't understand this. The message continues to be, feed, 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 no waitlist. I'm proud to say that I've been at the center eleven years, we've never had a waitlist. Kudos to Franklin County. That's not the norm. Pretty much everybody, and I can show you right now that I've received a waitlist, that all the counties around us have a waitlist. So, what you're hearing from the state level that Kentucky does not have a waitlist is just not true. We are getting ready to be forced to put Franklin County on a waitlist. We are now serving a thousand meals a month additional pre-COVID, because that was what was told for us to do. That was the right thing to do, the money was there. What do you want me to do now? Do I have to go to these people and say, I can't feed you? We, everybody wanted to feed you, but they don't want to now. And that's pretty much what it is. I know we all need money. All of our organizations need a little something more. And I am a dog lover. I have five dogs. I don't have any pets. And it's not to say anything, like Amy said, I'm not here to ruffle anybody's feathers. It's just, these are people, and I don't think that I should have to go to them and say, we can't feed you anymore. Do you understand that this meal could be the only meal? And a lot of times, and I know many of you have been on mail delivery routes, and you have seen the circumstance that some of these folks are in. I would say majority, they are at the poverty level. This could be the only visit, and it is a well check, and many need that. They don't have anybody. That is the only meal they have, and I know for a fact that some eat just a little bit and save it and eat it for dinner, because that's all they have. Now, do you expect me to have my staff go to these folks and say, we just can't feed you anymore? These are people that have served Franklin County, have worked here and have contributed to this community, and we should not be turning our backs on them. We need help. That's all I can say. We need help.
Thank you, Melissa Squier Sebastian. Go ahead and ask.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you for being here. So, one of the things that I hope was not lost on the years of the court, when you so eloquently spoke about the need, was the funding is to sustain exactly where we are. And yet, when I'm in the facility, I see new people coming in and registering every day, and they're not registering for just themselves. They are registering possibly for a spouse, and many times for grandkids, because they've got them with them, see them there. So, what you're saying is we're sort of on, unfortunately, a sliding, scale that's sliding the wrong way. Because right now, you have people in the program, yet you're having more people come in requesting the same services. So, the number that you've quoted here tonight is going to grow.
Yes.
And so, I just want to make sure that that's not lost on this body, that this number is moving in a negative direction.
And let me just say that we are in, the senior population's in the largest it's ever been in the history of the world. That is not going to plateau until 2050. So, it's just, this is just going to continue to grow and grow and grow until that time. We cannot charge for these meals. The Older Americans Act explicitly says this is offered to any senior for meals sixty and older, and it makes no difference where you are economically. That is the federal law. And I will just say that I would venture to say eighty percent probably come because they just honestly can't afford to eat anywhere else. And I just want to give a big shout-out to my staff and volunteers. Volunteers, we have almost a thousand hours of volunteer hours a month. It's pretty amazing. The staff, I heard it said earlier, you know, it's, we're not paid an exorbitant amount of money, nonprofits aren't. Understand that, and believe me, all of my staff does, too. They're not there to make the big bucks. They're there because they have a servant's heart, and they see the need of what needs to happen and advocate for seniors. And I just think it's amazing, the job that they do, and I just want it to be said, so that it doesn't go unnoticed.
Squier, say.
I have a question. The food pantry, is that through donations, or y'all purchase that food?
Donations.
So, that's all donations?
Occasionally, we will purchase food through a grant. We will get, we get some United Way funds for the food pantry. We have local donations that will come in for the food pantry. And sometimes, food is purchased from God's pantry, because we can purchase certain items at a very reduced cost. And so, that helps to keep our, some food on the shelves. But we don't purchase a lot.
Is it, is the food, is the food pantry holding its own now? Are we getting enough donations through there to provide the food you need to provide?
No. It runs at a deficit of about eighteen, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars.
A year, eighteen, twenty thousand a year.
And we offset that through local funds, people that are donating, fundraisers, that type of thing.
Well, I can say a lot of things that I know, like I did, I have rode on a truck, and I do, I have seen the people who, and they're all need, everything you say is true from what I saw. And I usually was just in the way, but anyway, I went to learn and understand more. The other thing I'd have to say is strictly what you said, unfunded mandates are pathetic. And that's what comes right out of the state and the federal government all the time. They can, they don't see this. They don't, they don't ride on the truck. If they did, maybe it would be funded. But maybe we all sitting here should do a better job of making sure they know what they're doing when they cut four million dollars out of the program, and they probably needed to put six million in it. And we've sat here tonight, and we've heard, they want four million, dog needs a couple of million, you need at least two-hundred thousand. That's chicken feed, we got to ignore it. But it's, we all know that, it's tough, tough stuff. It is tough.
It is.
Thank you, Squier. Squier Sebastian.
Thank you, Judge. And one of the things that Amy alluded to, and that you have alluded to as well, there are tremendous amount of volunteers, that if you had to channel resources in your budget away to pay for the things that they do because they are required services, there would even be fewer dollars in these pots. And we talk about that at Finance Committee meetings, I'm on the Finance Committee there as well. And we talk about the unfortunate reallocation of funds if individuals stop volunteering and stop bringing in food and stop doing those things. Because you see, that happens. So, this, this amount could grow in that regard if these were funded positions, because they are providing required services.
That's right.
Squier, always.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you, Marcel, for everything you all do. You know, I think the bigger conversation that I keep hearing time and time again is, you know, I'm reminded that we have hungry people in this community. I remember during the pandemic, I said, we're not going to let anybody go hungry. We'll find the money somewhere, right? And I'll just reiterate that now. We'll find money somewhere. We won't do a capital project or otherwise to make sure everyone's fed, or at least that's where I stand. But it comes to mind, you know, the state's sitting on 3.7 billion because they keep cutting programs and putting money in a rainy day fund with the idea that they're going to get rid of state income taxes, right? I mean, let's be clear. I think it's upon us, again, that we need to really have a tough talk as a body, not in committees, as a whole board, about what direction we want to go this year. The legislature convenes, what, in three months? And we need lobbyists there every day, working on our behalf, and we need to partner with other communities lobbying hard to make sure we get those dollars. There's no reason to have the largest surplus that we've ever had in the state's history and claims about, you know, all the good we're doing when our roads are failing, our people are hungry, our facilities aren't funded as they're mandated to be. This should not be, and the jails are bankrupting every county, this should not be a conversation that the local governments have to have about picking up the gap where the state and the federal government mandate that we do something, and then they don't fund it, as you said. So, I think, well, one, I'd like to convene, we hired a lobbyist last year, and we didn't have a conversation about what we wanted that lobbyist to go talk about with our folks. So, I hope that, you know, in the next two months, we can look at hiring somebody, and we can set goals and priorities as a body together. Again, not in committees, as a whole body, I want to have a public community conversation. You know, I've been wanting to hear some of these organizations, and I suppose it's nice to have everyone together tonight, but I don't want to pit one organization against another for funding. And I don't want to say that, you know, one organization's request for funding to keep them solvent comes before another. Everything comes together, and we have to figure out how best to fund all of these needs. But the bigger need is that our state needs to start ponying up more money for the programs that they make sure that we, or mandate that we have. So, Marcel, we'll find you some resources somewhere to make sure everyone gets fed, but we've got to have a bigger conversation. And we really, you know, in my mind, we need to lead the way for the whole state as the capital city. We're small enough and malleable enough of local governments that we can move in this minutia and maybe have an impact and lead other communities when they don't have the resources that we do. So, I hope we can take those steps in the coming months.
I would say that we're the only center in the Bluegrass Region that operates a commercial kitchen. Really, probably just a handful of senior centers in the state operates their own commercial kitchen. The savings of that, if we had to go with an outside source, I look at it as when going to a grocery store versus going to a convenience store, that's the price difference. If you go to somewhere that has, that's providing these meals, whether it's mom's meals, Bateman meals, something like that, that's providing food to all these other senior centers to serve, we prepare this in-house. That is a savings of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year by us providing that service in-house. That's more money that we can use to serve more folks. So, I just want you to understand, we're very unique, and we're just not the norm.
And that affords everyone sometimes a hot meal instead of just a sandwich pack or something that most counties don't get to do.
And Marcel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the inmates from the jail come and help theirs.
They do. Yes, we're, we work with trustees.
Jail hopper in the audience, so I want to thank the continued support of, you know, being able to use residents.
Yes, we do use trustees, and we're very, very fortunate to have that program, absolutely.
So, I want to say one thing, and I kind of jotted some stuff down. This is for you and Amy. I hope I'm not misspeaking here, but I think I'm confident that this court is committed to protecting our most valuable assets in this community. And for me, it's the seniors and the kids.
I've always said, if I wasn't advocating for seniors, I would absolutely be advocating for kids. And I do advocate for kids because they both work together.
Yep. So, thank you on behalf of the fiscal court. And again, Amy, thank you to all the wonderful work you all are doing. Okay. We're going to have a chief to come up. We're going to have a chief to come up. Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Doing well. Hope everyone's doing well. Appreciate you letting us get us on the agenda tonight. Um, so this is just authorization to award a bid for the fire performance generator. We budgeted for a new generator for Fire Station Nine, which is the Evergreen Road Fire Station. Um, that one's had some issues over the last few years and they're just starting to reach that age where they're going to have issues. So we budgeted to, uh, have it replaced this year. Advertised for bids, received one bid, uh, which met all the criteria. And we are recommending awarding that bid tonight.
Questions for Chief on this?
I've got a question. I don't know about the bid particularly.
Squire Tanner.
It said disposal of the existing generator, is that going to be surplus? Or are you going to give that to another, uh, agency or what's going to happen with it? Or does it work?
It does work, but it has some issues. Um, right now, it's actually broke down as a mechanical issue with it. Uh, we just threw it in there for them to remove it, um, for the vendor to remove it as far as what they do with it.
So it's a trade-in deal?
It's...
Oh, they're giving us anything forward?
They're not giving us anything forward. That's the call. We would have to pay someone to come in and remove the unit, replace the new one on the unit.
I got a question for the county attorney. Do we have to declare this existing generator surplus?
It's owned by the county. Correct. I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it has to. Yes.
So if they removed it and left it on site, can we come back and surplus that, that point? And just remove the cost of the...
They can remove it, but they can't take it off. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
So that may want to change their bid.
Thousand dollars. It's in there as a line item?
No, without the money, but they may not bid that. They think they get an old generator.
The thing is, they can turn that into scratch. And so...
Yeah, they could sell it for something, but, but we got, we hadn't declared the surplus yet. I don't think.
Chief, do you think if, if, obviously, we're going to have to do that right now, that that's going to change the price of this proposal?
I think we could authorize for this to move forward without the, uh, that line item, the thousand seventy-five dollars for the removal of the generator. If Chief then has a conversation with them and they're willing to honor that, I'd be fine to go ahead with it in that manner, but...
Squire Sebastian. Yeah. Squire Sebastian.
Thank you, Judge. This is a question for the county attorney. When a handwritten change is made, I guess, to a necessary document, are the changes, do they need to be initialized? Just, I, I just know where I worked before. If it was a necessary document and somebody changed some stuff on it, just handwrote some stuff in, you had to initial it. I'm asking that for future reference.
It's always best practice. That way, somebody can later come back and say, "I'm not the one who made that change."
You got it. Okay. So we just need to be very mindful of that, please. Whoever's sitting in these meetings, please be mindful of that.
That thousand seventy-five also has delivery setup, startup and testing.
So the, for this, the reason I included that in the bid part is because they're going to have to remove the old generator from the concrete pad and then reinstall the new generator on the existing concrete pad. Um, so I included that cost to make sure it was included in there, but...
It's not like we could take out that and just say, "That's taking care of getting rid of the old one" because there's other things involved in that price.
So may I ask this, Judge?
Please.
Um, Mr. County Attorney, how would you make a recommendation to the court to proceed? Because I think we, we certainly want to proceed. We're, we're heading into fall, which is a heavy, you know, weather event. We're heading into winter. We want to make sure that our, our, you know, protections to persons and properties taken care of, especially on this end of the county. I'd say Squire Tanner agrees with that as well. We want to upfit Evergreen, just like every other fire station. We want that. So we, could you give us potentially some, some language as to how we can address that? To go ahead and possibly move forward? And then perhaps the chief could just make sure that everything would be cohesive with, with the vendor on that, knowing that this is a piece of county property and we actually have to surplus it?
Can we just put on the next agenda to surplus it?
I, I just don't know.
When, when do you anticipate this generator going in?
Um, he said they had, the vendor talked to him, said they had it in stock. Um, within a few weeks of getting authorization, they would move pretty quick.
Six to eight weeks is what it says.
Yeah, when I spoke to him today, they said, "That's typical." He said, "They do have this one in stock, so they, they could possibly move faster on it."
Can we just surplus at next meeting? We're meeting on 25th.
If they would be okay with removing it, leaving it on site, then I'll surplus on it.
Yeah, remove it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, they should be expected to take it.
So I would back that one.
They just wouldn't be able to remove it from Friday.
Right. And, and, and maybe that's just a clarification phone call to, to make because maybe the language is somewhat ambiguous and maybe, maybe it's, that's the...
Right.
Yep.
Would there, would there be any issues with this bid if it was tabled until the next meeting, potentially?
I don't believe so. We were just trying to get it moving just, just because winter's coming. But, I mean, if, if we need to table it for that issue, we can...
It's still be good. Potentially table it until the next meeting and potentially have an item on the agenda to potentially surplus it and then that can all be done? Unless you anticipate something happening in the next...
The bid's valid. Yeah, bid's valid for thirty days. So the next meeting predates, stays within the range of the bid, the bid qualifications.
That may be the cleanest way to do it is potentially if somebody would like to make a motion to potentially table this until the next meeting?
I would like to make the motion. Can't just table this until the next meeting.
We actually have to do that.
We'll do this.
So, okay.
Or, or if you don't have to, see if there's any reason for us to keep it. I mean, if there's no change on the money, I mean, is it worth? Do we have another generator similar to it, one of the other stations we could use parts? I mean, it might be worth a conversation.
Similar, I just don't know, I don't know if, um, if we'd be able to keep it.
We have to store it somewhere.
I'm just saying, if he wants to rip parts off of it or something, you know what I mean? There might be a handle.
Those generators are like oh-four, sixteen engines with, with the power outlet, but they're all so old.
Yeah.
I mean, they're...
That's fine. Just, just the thought.
I think it'd be...
Okay, so we'll table it. We'll get there.
It runs now and works right now, doesn't it?
It does. It has one mechanical issue that we have to get fixed on it. Um, that we're still waiting to get fixed, but...
Have we replaced the new before?
This is the first one.
The first new one for the, okay.
So we replaced the one at Switzer Fire Station, uh, a couple of years ago.
So will we surplus that?
Well, yes, we did surplus that old one because it actually went out of service well before we actually replaced the new one.
I know we surplus that one.
Yeah.
Squire Whiteman, do you have something?
Chief, how does this, this bid that we put out, this new system relate to? Is it comparable to the same systems that we have at the other stations?
Talking about the new generator?
You, you had in your bid, removing of pad and replacing if it needs to be. I don't see that directly in here. And the bid specifically says a forty-eight kilowatt, uh, natural gas standby generator, but the bid has a forty-five, it seems, or forty-eight slash forty-five.
Yeah, so depending on the fuel source, it's the exact same generator. It's just depending on if you run on propane or natural gas as to what the need you buy for it will be. The reason that was in there on existing pad or if needed because depending on the size dimensions and stuff of the new generator, if it required a different sized pad, then we wanted to make sure that was included in their bid.
Is that the size of the current ones, forty, forty-five watt, forty-eight watt?
Uh, they're actually thirty kilowatt, the other ones. So we're actually just bumping it up a little bit to make them more, more efficient and make sure that, that they don't have any issues, uh, running that entire station.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, over to Tammy's here. Good evening, Tammy. How are you doing?
Good evening. Doing well. Um, this is an authorization to apply for the KCO insurance grant to fund the purchase of a patient lift, transfer chair, a body transfer lift and a mesh lift, lift slings that go with those items to assist with transporting inmates who are wheelchair users. The Franklin County Regional Jail currently has an inmate who uses a wheelchair. Um, staff must physically lift the inmate for transfer to the shower vehicle and other locations.
Questions for Tammy or, or do you have a two or two?
Something's on the tour.
It's a twenty percent match, so the estimated cost would be about two hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Just the, uh, the opposing question. If we don't get this grant, we need to make some concessions somehow. Do we have that in the jail's budget to, to meet this since we have a, a handicapped person in the jail that, that needs to have assistance?
Yes, sir. We can purchase this out of the commissary if we have to. This was presented to us and this would be, you know, this would be a huge benefit to our staff and for the safety of, uh, this, this person. They're...
Is that right there, Senator?
They're there.
But, but we cannot like buy it and then wait for the grant, right? We have to wait. We can't get reverse, I think, is how the grant works.
Right. Depends on the grant.
Right.
I, I would like to go ahead and purchase one now out of our commissary account. And, and if we were approved and had another one, um, that would be fantastic. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with what a corrier lift is. Um, it will allow us to lift the person up for, um, medical reasons. Um, it allows us to transfer them to a bed for toileting, um, for these issues. These are used all the time and the batteries can go, you know. And, and if we had a, if we had two of them, that would be fantastic.
Do we have any currently?
No, sir, we do not. We have not, um, well, it's since I've been there.
Okay.
No. Do, is there a need? There is a hundred percent need because, um, you know, if you have someone in jail that, um, six foot four, two hundred and forty pounds and having staff have to lift them up, it's an issue.
Okay. Squire Whiteman, do you have anything?
I do. Thank you, Judge. I don't recall seeing this. When, when is the application deadline and when are we to hear back from the All Lines Fund?
It's, um, September sixteenth is the date. Um, and last year, when we received the reward for the restraint chairs, we got notified the first of December.
Okay, all right. Just trying to gauge the timing. Thank you.
Do we need to approve by one from commissary? Is that something still at the jail?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tammy, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. With Amy's with us next. Good evening, Amy.
Good evening. I'd like to report on, um, the receipts and expenditures for the two months ending August thirty-first of twenty-four. Receipts for five point four million, expenditure seven point two, giving us a shortage of one point eight. Adding in our fund balance of twenty-nine point nine, that gives us a fund balance of twenty-eight point one. I do want to point out that we did have revenues, receipts come in for the opioid settlement fund of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. Those are court settlements. Also, you'll see that the jail fund, fire fund and sheriff fund are at a negative balance. I will be adjusting that with a cash transfer at next court. And I've also put in, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I've put the revenue and expenses as of September sixth. Do you have any questions?
What questions do we have for Amy on this information? Thank you very much. All right. Next is payment claims. Kim, does anybody have any questions on the payment claims? Squire Sebastian.
Thank you, Judge. I, I was just looking at the jail fund bills and it appears, I guess, in account oh-three, five-one, oh-one, four-four-five that the concrete ad is more expensive than the other ads. Is there any reason for discrepancy on that? Was it like a rush or just asking? Or have the rates gone up? Maybe, I mean, maybe there was a timing in the rates.
I believe it might be due to an extra line where we modify that one. It might have been a little bit more.
Okay. Just, just checking because we have, you know, there are three bids in there that just...
Yeah.
Making sure about that.
Okay.
Um, and if we go on down into, um, oh-three, five-one, oh-one, seven-one-one, same page, specialty equipment, where it says gauze, what is oh, is that QC or OC?
It's OC spray.
It's spray?
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know what OC was. Maybe everybody else knew. Everybody know what OC is?
No.
Okay. Spray. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kim? All righty. No more questions. We are going to, uh, authorization to go into closed session per KRS six-one-point-eight-one-zero-one CF. Discussions were proposed of pending litigation against or on behalf of public agency discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment of individual employee.
Let's go move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are in closed session.
Authorization to return in open session? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. We're in open session. Next agenda item, authorization to hire community outreach coordinator. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Authorization to approve memorandum of understanding between fiscal court and ASAP. So I believe, Charlie, you want to get up and say some words? Tell everybody who you are.
I'm the board coordinator for Franklin County Agency for Substance Abuse Policy, also known as ASAP. Fortuitously, I have Amy Snow here, who is our board chair, and David Boggs, who's our board vice chair.
So do you want to talk a little bit about the MOA we're talking about doing with fiscal
ASAP applied along with other agencies here in town as part of an opioid alliance to apply to the state for some opioid debate funds, and we were successful. Seven organizations that applied, five of them received funding, including Wanda Joyce and Just Say Yes, Fresh Start. In my proposal, I was trying to build capacity in ASAP to do a couple of different things, one of which we're accomplishing with the food, with the farmer's market and the Fresh Start, that was kind of a separate piece of the proposal, to provide them an opportunity of people that are going through transition in recovery, the opportunity to get online order food from the farmer's market, and then we were providing cooking classes, and all that's been going very, very well. We also contracted with the emergency food pantry, and we've been delivering food to the syringe exchange program and to all the treatment facilities here in town as the need The third thing with regard to food had to do with providing vouchers for individuals who are in treatment so that they could avail themselves of fresh food. That has, we have specifically, I wanted to build capacity of ASAP to bring the organizations that I mentioned together in what we call the opioid alliance. We're all doing very much the same things. As you heard from presentations earlier, Amy does phenomenal work with Wanda Joyce Many of the people that are the parents or grandparents are being seen by other members of the organizations that we are in contact with all the time. You've heard about the Senior Citizen Center. What we're trying to do is, first of all, is to have all of those organizations work more closely together and understand that we're seeing the same people at different stages of their life, at different stages of their journey, whether it's the recovery journey, whether it's the sustainability, whether it's the incarcerated journey, whether it's the, as Amy referred to upstream, I come from a background in public health, which means we're trying to find the root cause, which is what we try to do with the Just Say The mistake I made in applying for the funds is I didn't ask for enough money to pay for some benefits, and so in so doing, I have a position that I've been advertising for informally, and I began to cast around for some possible solutions. How can I find someone that could fulfill the needs of the MOA that I have with the We're hoping we will be reapplying it in successive years for continuation funding, obviously, and that's what led me here tonight within the discussion here with fiscal court. We think we've got a win-win, something that would benefit Max and his focus in the drug Those people that are being, that he sees and that he cares for are the same ones that we're caring for in many of the other organizations here in town that we're coordinating, so it looked like a win-win to us.
Before I open up for questions, I want to thank you, because, you know, to be honest, You know, I mean, whenever I have questions about opioid, you know, working with Woodford County or anything like that, you always pick the phone up, and I just want to say I appreciate you, I appreciate David Boggs, you know, Amy, anybody who serves on your board, because you're all doing very good work for Franklin County, so thank you. So what questions do we have for Charlie on this agenda item? So it's basically ASAP coming together with fiscal court to create this position to better
Thank you so much for coming. This position will be now a new position in county government, and it will continue on past the funding.
Authorization to return in open session?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. We're in open session. Next agenda item, authorization to hire community outreach coordinator. Questions on this? Alrighty, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Authorization to approve memorandum of understanding between fiscal court and ASAP. So, I believe...Charlie, you wanna get up and say some words, maybe?
Sir.
Tell everybody who you are.
I'm Charlie Kendall. I'm the board coordinator for Franklin County Agency for Substance Abuse Policy, also known as ASAP. Fortuitously, I have Amy Snow here, who is our board chair, and David Boggs, who's our board vice chair.
Good deal. So, do you wanna talk a little bit about the MOA? We're talking about the deal with fiscal court.
ASAP applied, along with other agencies here in town, as part of an opioid alliance to...applied to the state for some opioid abatement funds, and we were successful. Of the seven organizations that applied, five of them received funding, including Wanda Joyce and Just Say Yes, and Yes Arts. Fresh start. In my proposal, I was trying to build capacity in ASAP to do a couple of different things. One of which were accomplishing with the food, or with the farmer's market and the fresh start. That was kind of a separate piece of the proposal. To provide them an opportunity, people that are going through transition in recovery, the opportunity to get online, order food from the farmer's market. And then, we were providing cooking classes. And all that's been going very, very well. We also contracted with the emergency food pantry, and we've been delivering food to the syringe exchange program and to all the treatment facilities here in town as the need arises. The third thing with regard to food had to do with providing vouchers for individuals who are in treatment, so that they could avail themselves of fresh food. That has...we have specifically, I wanted to build capacity of ASAP to bring the organizations that I mentioned together in what we call the opioid alliance. We're all doing very much the same things. As you heard from presentations earlier, Amy does phenomenal work with Wanda Joyce Robinson. Many of the people that are the parents or grandparents are being seen by other members of the organizations that we are in contact with all the time. You've heard about the Senior Citizen Center. What we're trying to do is, first of all, is to have all of those organizations work more closely together and understand that we're seeing the same people at different stages of their life and at different stages of their journey. Whether it's the recovery journey, whether it's the sustainability, whether it's the incarcerated journey, whether it's the, as Amy referred to upstream, I come from a background in public health, which means we're trying to find the root cause, which is what we try to do with the Just Say Yes program. The mistake I made in applying for the funds is I didn't ask for enough money to pay for some benefits. And so, in so doing, I have a position that I've been advertising for informally, and I began to cast around for some possible solutions. How can I find someone that could fulfill the needs of the MOA that I have with the state? We're hoping that we will be reapplying it in successive years for continuation funding, obviously. And that's what led me here tonight within the discussion here with fiscal court. We think we've got a win-win, something that would benefit Max and his focus in the drug courts. Those people that are being...that he sees and that he cares for are the same ones that we're caring for in many of the other organizations here in town that we're coordinating. So, it looked like a win-win to us.
Perfect. Before I open up for questions, I wanna thank you, 'cause, you know, to be honest, you're my go-to. You know, I mean, whenever I have questions about opioid, you know, working with Woodford County or anything like that, you always pick the phone up, and I just wanna say I appreciate you. I appreciate David Boggs, you know, Amy, anybody who serves on your board, 'cause you're all doing very good work for Franklin County, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Alright, so what questions do we have for Charlie on this agenda item? So, it's basically ASAP coming together with fiscal court to create this position to better help our community. Squire Sebastian.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, Charlie. This position will be now a new position in county government, and it will continue on past the funding from ASAP, is that correct? I'm trying to make sure I...because I'm trying to look at all the clauses that are in this, trying to read it and make sure what...about the MOE being 30 days written notice, so I'm trying to be sure what that means.
It is a new position in county government, yes, under the umbrella of the county attorney's office, okay? And so, ASAP is graciously been willing to go in on this project with us in order to try to get individuals in this community the help that they need. And the way we kind of envision it is kind of funneling that through the court system as many of these individuals that ASAP is seeing, I'm seeing at multiple levels through the cases that I do. I do dependency neglected abuse cases, I do criminal cases, we do juvenile cases, and so, all of these same individuals, we're all dealing with, having interactions with them and their families in various forms. And so, it just seemed like a really natural fit as we can, you know, help to funnel people through these services. The way that we kind of proposed the MOU is, or the memorandum agreement, is that with these grant funds that were initially applied for, those filtering through ASAP to the county, I think they're looking to, you know, once again apply for those grant funds in the future, and we will be able to provide real numbers for ASAP of, you know, this many people came through this position seeking help in some way, shape, or form. 'Cause we're all, you know, in addition to the opioid portion of it, and I know a part of this grant was also mental health. We've been in discussions with the state. I think the position has already gone out to be advertised to start, help start a mental health court here in Franklin County. And I'm looking to this individual to be involved in that as well. So, not only the opioid issue and the drug issue that we're dealing with, with also the mental health issue in this person, helping get people services that they so desperately need. Because, you know, I can tell people to go get a mental health assessment, to go get treatment, to go get drug screens and those kinds of things, and some of these individuals just don't know where to go to get those things in the proper fit for them. And so, this individual will help filter them to these resources that they absolutely need and be a guide for them. And that's kind of the way we got the title. And so, it's our thought to, you know, as long as those grant funds and ASAP is willing to work with us, you know, to do it that way. And I, you know, I know there's been some other discussions in the past as far as the opioid settlement funds, that, you know, potentially if we need to tap into that, you know, I may be coming to you all to see if we can do that should these grant funds from ASAP drop.
One of the pieces in our scope of work that I originally applied for was to do the work necessary to build a recovery-ready community application to be certified Franklin County as a recovery-ready community. Doesn't mean any money, any additional money for the county, but it's something all of the agencies in Franklin County can use on their grants. Okay, say, "We are a recovery-ready community." And what that means is that the flow among and between all of the pieces and parts of recovery are smoothed out, alright? And that's exactly what he needs. He needs to know, he needs to know where all the places are that people can get services. I know where those are. I need help making that application. So, that was kind of the linchpin of how this sort of came together. Well, wait a minute, I'm doing this and you need that. Well, why don't we, why don't I give you some money? And I'm the only one here tonight that's giving you money.
Charlie, I mean, kinda circling back to Squire Sebastian's question. Ultimately, I mean, she not put words in your mouth, but, you know, if the money stops, then, you know, we'll have to continue paying for this.
Yes, that's the point.
But you made the comment, I believe, when Max hit a little bit on the numbers, you'd said something like, "There's a 15-year study," or something that, there's wanting to start getting the data from this point on, right?
Yes, we, yeah. Our vision with our opioid alliance is we wanna stop what you've been hearing tonight. And to do that, you gotta hit all the different pieces. You gotta do the Wanda Joyce Robinson, you've gotta do the jail piece, you gotta do the prevention piece, you gotta do all those pieces. So, our vision was, "Well, no, wait a minute, these opioid abatement funds are for 15 years." That's generational. We can make a difference. We can make that change. You saw what Amy did in 24 months. I mean, that's, so that's what the vision is. So, this was actually one of the missing pieces for some of the folks that are coming through his part of the world, and that adds to our picture. So, our picture is, that we're trying to create is our, here is the path of recovery within Franklin County, and here are the different agencies that are working to fix those pieces. But our ultimate goal is to change that whole vision, so that we don't end up with tons of people in court, tons of people in the morgue, tons of people in the hospital, tons of people in treatment, because we've begun the harder work of making a difference down the, upstream surface.
And I think, just having, I think, in my mind, what I love so much about this, which is one of the things I love about Franklin County, period, is that we are so good at putting together a continuum of care so that people from here to here know where to go. They know how to get services, they know how to get help, and we can actually make our county a little healthier than it is. So, I'm thrilled and I appreciate you. I do have one question, if that's okay? I know that Amy has a grant, and she came before us, what, a couple of months ago now? And it's $35,000, if I remember incorrectly. So, we may have that as well. And so, is this gonna, is this gonna work for that? Do you feel like that it's still a good fit?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We should know by the end of this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alrighty, Charlie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we have a question from the treasurer.
Not a question. I just wanted to make the court aware, because I think we were misinformed. So, the funding from ASAP will be covering the gross, $55,000. The general fund will be covering the benefits, so that's roughly $20,000. Charlie did say he would try to write that into your next...the whole amount in the next.
It would be less, because we're in the fiscal year already, correct? If he applies and gets it. Do you apply, when is the next grant?
The next one will probably be in the late winter, early, late winter.
So, it'd be before our next budget, theoretically?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, we'd be looking at maybe less.
But also, we, Amy, they never don't get grants. I have no doubt we're gonna get, they're gonna get that.
Don't say that!
So, we can use that as well.
Okay, but Amy, thank, yeah, that's a good point. Alrighty, sounds good. That being said, we're gonna go ahead and move into the voting session of our meeting tonight. Clerk, please call roll.
Squire Sebastian.
Here.
Squire Blackburn.
Present.
Squire Dykes.
Here.
Squire Harrod.
Here.
Squire Tanner.
Here.
Squire Wesman.
Present.
Judge Mueller.
Present. Authorization to award a bid to Veritek Inc., sole bidder for fire department generator.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
Until we iron out a few little things in that.
I'll second.
Alrighty, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, we will table that till hopefully the next meeting. Authorization to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of the application to Kentucky Association of Counties Insurance Grant Program for the Franklin County Regional Jail.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion passes. Authorization to receive treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion to deny any claim? No motion was made, let the record reflect, claims are to be paid. Authorization to hire Ashley King as community outreach coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion passes. Authorization to approve a memorandum of understanding between Franklin County Fiscal Court and Franklin County Agency for Substance Abuse Policy ASAP.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion passes. Authorization to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion passes, we adjourn. Thank you.